Mayor members of the commission, I'm Bob Slaven, president of Slaven Management Consultants. Beside me is Randy Frank, who runs an office for us out of Louisville. We have worked together now for, what, like 15 years?
Almost 20.
Almost, oh God. For 20 years. The work we do is, we do a variety of things, but the work that Randy and I have worked together on is executive recruiting for governments. Our company's been in existence since the early 90s, and I've done this work since prior to that. Over that time, we've worked for cities in 46 of the 50 states, placed something like 850 executives in local government. Of that, probably 300 or more have been chief executives in either cities or counties. This project, and each, one of the things I'll say and need to emphasize is talking about quantity of work we've done, but the reality is that every search we've ever done and every client we've ever had is different. And we don't come into these projects with any preconceived ideas about what we're going to find or what we're gonna, what the needs of the community are. We've done some research, so we know what the websites say and what Wikipedia says, and talked to some colleagues, but we don't come in here with any preconceived ideas about what we're going to hear or see once we get here. I've told a number of people today that our goal is to leave here tomorrow with a very clear idea about what this commission is expecting and would look for in the next city manager of Danville, and that's why we're here. We're doing a lot of listening. The process does result, and once we know what we're looking for, we develop a very strategic plan to get there, to achieve the goal. And again, it will be adjusted to accommodate the needs of this particular community, but will almost all, for sure, include advertising, using kind of the shotgun approach. In doing that, we, and then we also do, use the rifle approach, but the shotgun approach includes announcements being placed in professional periodicals that are published on websites and sometimes in print, and go to people who we know to be either members of the International City County Management Association or of other organizations that might be of interest to this particular client in terms of attracting people that may be of interest here. As examples of some of those might be the National League of Cities, the Kentucky League of Cities, women in government, minorities in government organizations, and organizations like that. In addition to that, we use a very targeted networking process by which, through which we identify people who we may already, identify people who maybe we already know are others who we don't, but strongly suspect would be qualified for this job, and we very directly contact them, provide them information about the process, about the search in the city, serve as a liaison, if you will, between the city and them, through which they are able to determine whether, find out a lot about the city and determine whether or not the opportunity is for them, and we give them a safe place to talk. Once we have that accomplished, that's the recruitment phase, we screen the resumes we receive. It doesn't make any difference. I'm wearing these out in a hurry.
With three of those, Bob, you're looking pretty important.
Yeah, but when I talk and nobody can hear me, it may look more important than it sounds. The, thank you, Mayor. Once we narrow, once we have the resumes that we know we're going to get, we screen them again, and it doesn't make any difference whether they're from people who we invited or people who applied through an ad or where they came from. We screen against the criteria that was set here, and we'll develop a set of maybe 10 or 12 well-qualified people who we will proceed to get additional information from by phone, by email, and by written questionnaire. Once we have that, we, all that information gathered, we again screen on the basis of the criteria established by this mayor and commission, and then we'll want to come back and talk with the commissioners about what we found, and there'll probably be as many as 10 candidates active at that point. We call them semifinalists, not finalists. We'll want to talk, show the commission what we've, who they are, where they are, what their credentials are, what they've told us about their interest in the job, any issues that might have occurred in their career that we need to, that the commission needs to know about before choosing to, for them to proceed in the process. And then we'll ask the commissioners to let us know which of those folks they're most interested in, and once we know that, and most likely there'll be five or six at that point, we go and do real due diligence on them, and that can include, oh, there's a step I forgot because we agreed to do this when Randy talked to the commission before. We will do Skype or something comparative to Skype interviews of several of these candidates who appear to be best qualified, and as part of that meeting we'll have with the commission in which we're sharing candidate information, we will share those Skype interviews with them. So they'll actually see the candidate as well as read what they've written and hear what they've said. But hopefully, one of the results of that meeting is that we'll know which folks this commission is most interested in, and then we start doing what was formal due diligence, which requires written authorization from the candidates to do it, and it includes referencing, detailed referencing, it includes, can include site visits, also includes credit, criminal, driving, civil records, sex offender registry, any credentials that they say they have, like ICMA, Credentialed Manager, if they happen to be a CPA or a professional engineer, we check those out.
Education.
Did I forget education? We certainly verify education. And so when, and at that meeting, I've alluded to a couple of times, we'll want to schedule the completion of the project with the commission, so that, and determine from them how they want to handle the final interviews. The process is intended to take 90 days from the time that we have a recruitment profile approved. That should be a few days from now. And then it's 90 days from that point, which basically when we know that that profile is, represents what the commission is looking for, we begin the process, and it's intended to take no more than 90 days from that point to the time commission could be interviewing. There's certain things that we don't have control over that could affect that, but nothing we will do in our company will delay that process. And in this day and age, we're in a very competitive environment, where we're not getting a lot of candidates because they don't, not as many people are qualified for these jobs as used to be the case. And we're in a competitive environment, so we'll be very interested in having the process move forward lest we lose well-qualified people to other opportunities. I don't know, that's kind of a summary of where we are, and any questions anybody has or the commission has, we'd be happy to.
Ladies, gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Slaven?
Bob, would you like to expand a little bit just for the sake of the folks out here, your itinerary of today and tomorrow in terms of interviews?
Oh, yes, sir. Today, we spent talking with commissioners, with a general meeting with the staff, a collective meeting with the senior staff, a rather lengthy meeting with the manager and the attorney, and rather detailed interview, interviews with the mayor and commissioners. Tomorrow, and that started at nine, and it, well, we're still working, and then this meeting, of course. Tomorrow, we're going to meet individually with department heads, purpose of which is to learn about, a little bit about what they do and what their departments do, and what functions are provided by this municipality, and why, and how we can help them do their work better. And any thoughts they have about this or of interest to us. We've told them all that if in fact what they ask for is consistent with what the commission wants, that's fine, if not, we work for the commission. But so far, we've heard nothing that would suggest there'd be any real conflicts. So we'll spend, oh, and then tomorrow, we'll end the day with a tour of the city, which we're looking forward to.
I would just add that we create a profile with pretty pictures and all the information, and that's the reason we want to talk to the department heads, because the more we tell the candidates about your community and the kinds of things you do, for example, you have a utility, not all cities have a utility, so that will be of interest to the candidates, the more we tell them about the exciting projects, we saw the firehouse is listed there as a project, we'll tell them about that. So new projects, the more we can tell them about the town, the more we can get them interested, and so that's what the profile does, and these are just samples of other ones.
Randy's absolutely right, in terms of enticing candidates to this job. This is far more than a city of 16,000, point two, 16,200 people. Their service area in terms of utilities, you're providing services to something like 75,000 residential accounts. You're, it's, there's a lot of this, what the city does, it's part of a regional service commodity, and so we need to get that point across, that if, that it offers prospective candidates a lot more than the opportunity to run a smaller city in Kentucky.
All right. I'm just pouring out curiosity. Ron, how many employees does the city have?
Approximately 150 full-time.
And how many vehicles or motorized?
I hazard to sum all those up, but it's probably in 200.
Okay.
Or more.
And the reason I want to say that is so that the public can understand that this is a, this is a, this is a corporation, if you will. If you look around and talk to CEOs of some of our industries, I guarantee you Mr. Scott's job is every bit as big, if not bigger, than theirs, with 150 employees, 200 pieces of moving equipment, and still has to answer to us and the public. Tough job, big job, and I think that is a good reference point for everyone to keep in mind as we get into this search. If you all don't have anything else, then we'll go to item five, which is, one of the reasons we're here is to hear the public regarding your thoughts on the ideal city manager. I'll have only one rule, and that is the three-minute rule. So, Mr. Morgan?
I'm Mark Morgan, resident of Danville. It's Mark Morgan, and I want to thank the commission, I want to thank Mr. Scott, Mr. Dexter, and Slaven Corporation for being here to help us with this project. After hearing about this, I'm confident that you all will present a slate to our commission of individuals who can handle the accounting, the fiduciary responsibilities, who's familiar with the legal responsibilities, whether it be state law or local ordinance. I'm sure that you'll present individuals who have the administrative background to handle the job, and all three of those areas can be vetted on a somewhat objective apples-to-apples process. What I hope that you will do, and the challenge for you, and especially the challenge for the commission, is to find someone with the professionalism, the demeanor to, that we've enjoyed with Mr. Scott, and that is that when, when a person meets with Mr. Scott about a policy, then that person comes away knowing they've not only been listened to, but have been heard, and that their ideas have been considered respectfully, and that if no is the answer, then that no is delivered not in a personal way, whether it be to a member of the public or to the commission. So we have to have a manager who's strong enough to tell members of the public, and each of these five commissioners, no, when it's appropriate. But they, no one who hears no from Mr. Scott, hears a disagreement from Mr. Scott, comes away feeling like they have been treated disrespectfully or without being heard. And they generally, they, well, every time I've, I've been told that what I'm proposing isn't going to happen, then I've always had objective, fact-based accounting or legal reasons why it cannot go forward as I would, as I would like. And it's never a personal, it's a matter, it's never a hidden agenda, and the basis for disagreement is always objective and fact-driven. And that is, that's the challenge for this commission, is to find someone with the strength and the demeanor to deal with us and the public and you all, where it's never personal and it's always done for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Brown?
You're taller than I am. I'm Wilma Brown, a citizen, and actually, Mark said a great deal of the same things I wanted to say, but I did want to point out, because we are a small community, the citizens like to know who the people are in our government, and sometimes that's a thorn in the side to the government, but we think it's important. And so I've had a number of reasons to see Mr. Scott over the years. He always returns telephone calls and emails promptly, and that's something extremely important. His communication skills are very good, and as Mark said, even when he's saying no, you don't feel as if he has disrespected you or has not heard you or has not listened to you. So I hope, and he also is very involved in the community. I don't mean just things that the city's doing, but we get to see him as citizens, we see him out, you know, enjoying himself at plays or concerts or festivals, whatever it happens to be. And so I think in a small town, it's very important that we have someone who understands that that's the nature of a small town. We're going to know who you are, and we're going to be watching you, and your reputation can get soiled fast. So anyway, I appreciate the opportunity for the public to speak to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilma. Who's next? Mr. Kaywood?
John Kaywood, magistrate of the Ball County Fiscal Court, and that's the hat I'm going to wear in my words tonight. And you scared me, Bob, because you said you'd done some research, and I thought, I don't know if I should speak or not, but what I would hope that you folks would keep in mind is a word that Mr. Scott used earlier. He called team lurk. And that's what I want with whoever replaces the efforts that Mr. Scott has had with the Ball County Fiscal Court, is it be somebody who has some patience, some strengths, willingness to find, help find common ground to work with our court. There's, there'll always be bumps. We're not all alike. We all think different. We all have different responsibilities, but my goal as one court member, I speak only for myself, I'm not here to represent the court. I'm here to say I think the citizens deserve and want us to work together as best we can and find common ways that we can do things better together for this community. So somebody who, as you all go through your review, keep that in mind, if you would, please, because our court really, deep down, wants to. They may not always think like that, but they really, deep down, want to. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So how's that Parks and Rec ordinance coming?
About three minutes of.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Kirchner?
Just briefly, I think everything everyone mentioned is very important. I guess I would just add, looking towards the future, whether we're talking about broadband for the final mile or we're talking about providing city services, I think being technologically plugged in and moving towards being a smart city is important. So I don't know what that translates to in terms of somebody who's tech savvy. I just know enough to know that we need to be good at it, but I, so, someone who's technologically tuned in.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mr. Pollan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tom Pollan, and I appreciate so much the commission's approach to the selection of our next city manager. It hasn't always gone smoothly. I hate to bring up times when a commission said, "Well, you'll be it." That's not the way to do it, and so glad that Bob and Randy are here. Welcome to our fine community. The city manager form of government has served us incredibly well. It has been the fulcrum of what has made our community. It's been my role to be involved in the last two elections, back in, the first one in 1991, and then again in 2008, where this community overwhelmingly said, "This is the type of government we want for this city to be what we should be." The name of our group that worked on that, those elections, was KEEP, and KEEP stood for knowledge, experience, efficiency, and professionalism. Those are the characteristics that we are looking for, and I know that you're looking for. I did take an opportunity to go back, and I didn't hear from Randy, but I'm sure you all are involved with the International City Managers Association. I'm probably one of the only non-city managers that's a member of that organization, but they have so many good management skills that come forth. And so I wanted to read to you that the, that organization is the leading organization of local government professionals dedicated to creating and supporting thriving communities through the world. So a few things, characteristics that we might think about, that I would hope you would think about. It would be good if the next city manager were a member of the ICMA Leadership Institute, that we are looking for a career manager. There are many, many capable people out there, but we need someone with great experience that has a great track record. The goal is to improve and reinvent the ways in which local government conducts business. The goal is to improve life for the people in their community, to understand pension issues and financial recessions, to understand what caused municipal bankruptcies. God forbid that ever happened to us, but we have to have someone that is understanding in that role. Understand the CRM, which stands for Customer Relationship Management. That is a whole avenue. I know, I'll get there, you can throw me out. Understand our local economic development organization and its issues. Be a public facility guru on our infrastructure needs. Understand cybersecurity issues. Best practices for proactive government. Be a good listener. Applaud and adopt citizen engagement. There's a great study of, the classic study in California of 238 city managers, and these were the five qualities valued for the, that position. Honest, responsible, capable, imaginative, and logical. We need someone who has a track record in building trust and unifying teams to carry out needs of our community. Budgets are tight, but the city manager knows those federal and state grants and subsidies that exist out there. We have a unique community here, as Bob was mentioning. We have a historical tone to our community, as we all know. It's very important to understand that. It's important to understand the town and gown relationship. It's important to understand the economic development partnership, the, and you mentioned the uniqueness of regionality, our medical community, and Parks and Recreation. I appreciate your all's work. Godspeed. I have a very thick file over here that I haven't even had to pull out for 11 years, which is great, thank goodness Betty Pollan keeps up with those things. Cheers.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom. Is that a folder of candidates?
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right on into our discussion regarding things that we individually and probably collectively would like to see as traits of a city manager. I can go about this one of, one of three ways. I can go about this and say ladies first. I can go about this and do it in terms of seniority of age.
Oh, God, you did real terrible, didn't you?
I can go about this in terms of seniority on the commission.
Ooh. I'll say ladies first, Mayor.
I think she just said, so go ahead there, Kevin.
I think Commissioner Cottle probably has a very different insight than, than we have.
Mayor, you make me nervous when you start making category, I mean, you are basically violating every type of First Amendment category that's prohibited. So I'm glad we stopped at two examples.
Thank you. Yeah, I was telling Bob and Randy that I've been through this a time or three.
Time or three?
A time or three, yeah.
That's good.
But, you know, I told them today, I think it's pretty obvious you want somebody who's a good communicator. I think Ron's done a good job with that, and he does return emails promptly. And it's not just with the commission, he's got to communicate with the public as well, which sometimes can be a little more difficult because they don't, they're not privy to all the information we're privy to, so you kind of have to start from the beginning sometimes. I think Mr. Pollan being here goes along with my second thing that I mentioned, which was to know the form of government, and I would think that most city manager candidates at that level would know about that form of government. I would prefer probably that they had some experience in it, if that's possible. And another thing is, what Mr. Kaywood mentioned is, you know, somebody who can build relationships or nurture further relationships, I guess, with other governmental bodies, the fiscal court being one, important one, but, you know, there's the planning zoning and Parks and Rec EDP, and I think you mentioned the center, center and the hospital, which I think Tom did, anyway, but I hadn't thought of those two, but that's also, they're a great partner with the town, and that should be cultivated as well. So I don't, yeah, I think Mike said one time, "You're looking for somebody who can walk on water." That'll work, but, but I think those are the keys, and they're probably similar to some, and other people probably have other ideas, but that's a good start, anyway.
Now, madam?
I would like for someone who is, like Mr. Pollan said, to, looking to stay and make a career out of this and not use it as a stepping stone, if, if there's any way to, to know that. And Jennifer touched on something that I had actually thought of this afternoon, was technology, moving forward, being pioneers, it's what Danville's known for. So I would like... So I would like to not miss the technology train.
Ms. Atkins?
I really don't have anything new to share. Tom Pollan dragged me to a meeting at four o'clock today. I was very appreciative of that. And so I dragged him to my meeting at 5:30, and I hope he's very appreciative of what he just shared with us, because I think he just did us all a great favor. If we could find someone that could do those, meet those qualifications, we'd be well-served.
Saving yourself for the last, huh?
Executive privilege.
Mine's easy. I appreciate everybody that came up to the podium and spoke their piece, so I'll just say ditto, 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 and the same to you all. And I think experience will matter in this case for our size community.
I think one of the answers that, that I offered to Bob and Randy, I think took them a little bit by surprise, and, and with, with all due respect, I don't want somebody who's going to make a career here. I want somebody who's going to be here about five, six, seven years, because they're going to get recruited away by the likes of Austin, Texas, by the likes of Charlottesville, Virginia, by the likes of St. Petersburg, Florida. Because at that point, we will know we had a really, really good city manager. Always hire the very best you can hire, knowing good and well, they're going to get recruited away. And so that's, and I can tell you from personal experience, and maybe Mr. Scott will attest to this, I'll let him decide, but I can tell you from personal experience that after eight years of doing this, it's time for a change. And I believe the average city manager stay is about seven years. Would you agree with that, Bob?
Seven.
More like five.
Okay. Okay. It's a tough job. It's a tough job. And so in my world, change is good. Change is good.
Yeah, that's well stated.
Is there anything else? I don't think we have any possible action, do we?
One addition to my comment, because I overlooked it, but I did mention it when I talked to you guys, and that was a big task, taking care of our city, but don't forget our 150 employees as well. It's a balancing act, so.
Very much so.
And they're certainly the face of our city. They are a city, so we don't want to forget them.
If there's no other comments or no other business to come before this commission, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made. Do it here second.
Second, and third.
And third. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And thanks to everybody.
Thank you for coming and lending your thoughts.